Good morning. My name is Don Michaelman, and I want to welcome you to the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. If you would check your cellphones and see if they're on mute or off, we'd appreciate it on that. What we'd like to do when we open it up for the audience to come forth and make presentations is try to keep it around three minutes if you can. And if someone has already stated what you want to state, restating it may not really enhance it anymore, but it'd be up to you on that. But if you can keep it around three minutes, we'd appreciate it. And Kaylee will give a little reminder when you're around there. Yeah, three-minute timeframe, okay? So I hereby called with -- oh, yeah. Councilman Matoria has joined us. He's the representative from the city council that sits in with the Planning and Zoning Commission. And that way, he has a good feel for what's occurring here and what your thoughts are here. So I call to order the May 12, 2022, public hearing of the City of Prescott Planning Commission. There are six members here. We have -- and we'll take a majority on a vote. This is an open public hearing and is being taped, recorded, and videotaped by the city. The proceedings are being televised by representatives of the public media. The public, local cable, and/or radio stations may also rebroadcast. As some individuals may be attending this meeting remotely, all parties wishing to be heard, including commission members, are requested to state their name prior to speaking in order to ensure accurate minutes. Members of the public when called upon are required to state their name and address for the record so we may know who is speaking and be able to contact them at a later date if necessary. When staff members come up and make presentations, they will introduce themselves too on that. So first item is approving minutes. Now, we have two sets of minutes to approve here because last meeting, we didn't have a majority of members who were at that previous meeting. So the first one is the February 24, 20 -- oh, thank you, Ted. Forgot to have commission members introduce themselves. That is my mistake. Let's start with Butch this time.
Good morning. Butch Tracy.
Ted Gambogi.
Tom Riley.
Good morning. I'm Tom Hutchison. Thank you.
Good morning. Stan Galagaski.
Sorry about that. So back to the February 24, 2022, meeting minutes. Are there any corrections? If not, is there a motion?
I move to approve Stan Galagaski.
All right. We have a motion and a second.
I'll second that.
Okay. Thank you, Tom. We have a motion second. Any further discussion? If not, Kaylee, would you call the roll?
Yes, and just a reminder to state your name before speaking in case I have to review the minutes. Okay, so Butch Tracy.
I approve.
Tom Riley.
Not voting. I wasn't present at the meeting.
Okay, fair enough. Tom Hutchison.
Approve.
Stan Galagaski.
Approve.
Ted Gambogi.
Ted Gambogi, approve.
Thank you. Don Michaelman.
Approve.
Okay, the motion passes 5-0.
Next, we will look at the April 14, 2022, meeting minutes. Are there any corrections? If not, is there a motion?
Move to approve. Tom Riley, move to approve the April 14, 2022, meeting minutes.
We have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Butch Tracy, I'd second him.
All right. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? If not, Kaylee.
Butch Tracy.
I approve.
Tom Riley.
Approve.
Tom Hutchison.
I approve.
Stan Galagaski.
Yes.
Ted Gambogi.
I approve.
Don Michaelman.
I approve.
The motion passes 6-0.
Next item on the agenda is REZ21-008, a request for a rezoning from RE2Acre, Rural Estate 2Acre, to Business General BG to allow for a mini-storage and a commercial facility on parcel number 106-02-052C at 5900 Willow Creek Road. Property owner, Granite Property Investments LLC. Applicant is Granite Basin Engineering. Tammy.
Thank you. Good morning, Chairman, members of the Commission, Tammy Dewitt, Community Planner with the City of Prescott. So we're going to kind of just go an overview of the area again like we've done with the last two meetings, just to update everybody. So we're going to start with the general, the 2015 general plan land use map. So this is the corridor we are looking at on Willow Creek Road. We have Pioneer Parkway here. This area in our general plan was designated for commercial uses. And as we can see here, the red, these are the two parcels that we're looking at, the southern one today, just the southern one today. The northern one will come back in a later date. We're still waiting for a updated site plan for that and narrative of really what they want to do on the property before we bring it forward again. So like I said, in the 2015 general plan and the previous general plan, this area was designated for commercial uses. It's been for sale for many years, and now we have some prospective buyers who want to purchase the property to develop the property. But the RE2Acre zoning, which is what it is now, is more like a holding zone, areas that aren't detail-zoned or weren't zoned when we updated the land development code. They were left as an RE2Acre for future development and future proposals to come forward. Like we said, the RE2Acre is very rural agricultural type for 2-acre lot sizes. It's more for the outlying areas of the city more than the infill, not really for infill development like we're seeing. This is be more of an infill development for properties that already have utilities and roads and access. So what's being proposed for this property is the Business General zoning district. They are proposing to have the mini-storage. These uses are, this type of zoning, we usually see on collector or tilleal streets. This is a commercial corridor overlay with on Willow Creek Road all the way down. So this is designated for commercial uses on this corridor. So like I said, we're looking at the rezon 21008, which is for the southern portion. Pinon Oaks Drive is here, Willow Creek Road, and it's the southern portion here, which is, like we said, our zone RE2Acre. So this is the updated site plan that was provided to staff at the last meeting in, when was it, April. The applicant was stated that they wanted to take away the office building, that there wasn't something they were really intending to do, and they're expanding, want to expand the size of the mini-storage facilities. It's self-service. It's indoor, climate-controlled. So all you're really going to see is the building. You aren't going to see the storage units like you would for some of the other storage facilities we seeing, we're seeing. There are lots of storage facilities in town. They're all full, and they're taking reservations. So these are facilities that are needed in the community. We are seeing some of these coming forward. So that, but this is what's being proposed. This is just a site plan. If this is a recommended approval and it is approved through city council, they still have to come forward with a conditional use permit in which we're going to look at more of the landscaping. They are going to have to put landscaping along this southern, this boundary here for screening because it is against residential, and they'll have to have other landscaping required. They did provide a water service application. They are not using enough water to have to go to water issues, so their water's been approved administratively. So that's not an issue as we move forward with this application. In regards to traffic, which is a huge concern for the neighbors out there, from our experience, storage facilities have one of the least amount of traffic once they're developed. So just people coming to bring stuff or get stuff from their facilities, that's usually the only traffic you see for these type of facilities. They did do a traffic impact analysis. When they did the traffic impact analysis, it was for the storage facility and for a proposed office building. Since they took off that office building, there's going to be less traffic and less impact, but they are still going to have to do some improvements to Willow Creek, I mean, to Pinon Oaks Drive and the egress out to split it up and widen it. And that's going to be something that's going to be part of their engineering permits if this moves forward. But these were the notes from the traffic engineer based on what was submitted before. It's kind of changed, so there's less impact to that intersection just from this use. And we'll have to see what comes from the north parcel to see what other impacts may be from that, or if they're going to have to update their traffic impact analysis for that northern parcel. But for the southern, our traffic engineer has no concerns with this moving forward as it is right now. And that concludes my presentation. I'm free to answer any questions, and I know we have people from the public here that would like to speak too.
Okay. Any questions for Tammy? Tom.
Hi, Tom Riley. Tammy, when you say that the traffic is reduced, and I understand that, can you give us some idea as to what kind of a volume of traffic on a daily basis a facility like this would experience?
From experience, from seeing other facilities, you only see a few trips a day coming, coming to and from the property. Because once they get their stuff in there, they come every once in a while to pick up something unless they're, they're moving in is more the more impact is, but otherwise there's no other.
Thank you.
Tom.
Tammy, help me recall, did the traffic engineer specify that a southbound left-turn lane be added to Willow Creek Road?
It could be for the other use on the northern parcel, but for this one, they're just going to have to improve Pinon Oaks Drive. The other is for the more intensive traffic. With the reduction in the traffic impact for this use, we're just probably just going to see the impact to Pinon Oaks Drive and the improvements there.
I guess what I'm driving at is that, I think we agreed that there is an existing traffic problem getting out off of, out of Pinon Oaks Road.
To turn left, yes.
Trying to make a left turn north.
Yes.
That problem does exist.
Yes.
And this southbound lane would in fact help that.
It could, yes. And that's something that they're going to have to work out with our traffic engineer if this is going to require that to be improved, or is it for the other use on the north side? So that's something that'll be looked at as these come forward.
And so if in fact we're going to talk about improving Pinon Oaks Road, does it make sense or could it be possible to tie adding that southbound left-turn lane into this proposal?
No, all we're looking at is the site plan for this, whether it's an appropriate use, the zoning's an appropriate use of this property. That's something that's going to be worked out between the developer and their traffic engineer.
You see where I'm headed with this.
Yes, you're not approving the traffic impact analysis. That's not something that the commission is reviewing. We gave it to you for informational purposes, but it's not something you are approving. So that's something that the developer and our traffic engineer will be working out what's going to be required per the traffic impact analysis and the recommendations that came out of that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Tom Riley. Tammy, according to the report that you gave us, this area has been designated in two general plans as being a commercial activity. It's a commercial area, correct?
Correct.
Were those plans voted on by the citizens?
Yes.
Both of them?
Yes.
Okay, so it's not something that was conjured up by you guys in the council and they just sort of implemented it? It was voted on by the people of Prescott?
Correct. The general plans are elected, are voted on by the citizens.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Other questions? On that, do we have a representative on the applicant here?
Yes. Yes.
Would you want to make any comments, sir?
I'm here to basically -- Bill Watson, 3300 North Tova Trail, Prescott, Arizona. The owner couldn't make it this morning. He apologized for his absence. He asked me to represent him in this, and I'm basically here to answer any questions that any of the board may have or citizens, Pinon Oaks, that might be here.
All right. Appreciate that, sir. Any questions for the applicant? Tom.
Tom Riley. Is this going to be a two-story facility, a three-story facility? How tall is it going to be?
Yes, it is going to be a two-story. We're probably looking at 20 to 25 feet, right in that range.
Okay.
There's substantial grading on that property also that's going to be required. So we'll be able to get our lower levels down considerably.
Okay. Thank you.
Ted Gambogi, follow-up to Commissioner Tom's question. As I look at the side view, you mentioned there's a lot of grading being done. From, I'm trying to ask how, I'm trying to figure out how to ask this. You were saying the building could be anywhere from 20 to 25.
25.
Feet tall. But is that the length of the building?
It's the length of the building. The highest portion will probably be toward the
Pinon Oaks.
North end.
Not necessarily. I would say the highest, the highest point would be probably toward the center.
The highest point's toward the center.
Yeah, because that grade comes down from the south to the north.
And how are you accommodating that grade in the building design?
We'll cut and fill with material that's on-site. Retaining walls were needed, and that's why I say we can, we can get that grade down so that we're not looking at the full 25 feet if that were the case as far as the size of the building.
Thank you.
Other questions? I have a couple, sir. Will the building be sprinkled?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And do you have a feel for the timeframe when customers usually come and go?
Not necessarily the timeframe where they come and go, but our maximum number of people that might be on-site on a daily basis, that's the maximum, is about six cars.
Okay.
With the facilities that we currently own, that's what we've found. Once people get in, they're there, and they pay their monthly rent, and a lot of times we don't even see them.
All right. Any other questions for the applicant? Thank you, sir. We may call upon you when the public
Absolutely.
Well, boy, if we could. All right. Let's go ahead and open this up to the public. When you come up, please state your name and address. And do we have a list? Kaylee?
Yes, we have three comment cards. We'll go ahead and start with Tim Welty. And Tim did provide some supplemental photos that I put in front of you.
Tim Welty, 5801 Honey Suckle Road, right in our backyard. Okay. I would like to request the commission to put into thinking into their own houses you live in as mine for the last 23 years. You have the pictures up there we've seen for the last 23 years, and we're totally just boxed in there. You put this thing in. It's 20 or 25 foot high or something. I assume you all you've been there and view the dramatic effect it will have on our home values and just living there, how important your decision will be. I would wonder if the applicant could do an appraisal of how much our property values will drop. Reason why I bring that up? 2011, 2012, we refied the house. We had it appraised. They praise it as a view home, and the praiser said it probably worth, I go back to the office and figure it out, 10 to 20% more in appraisal. So that'll be gone. You got me?
Excuse me. What year was that that you had the house?
2011 or 2012.
2012. Thank you.
Okay. One thing, you talked about the traffic going in there too. The traffic isn't normal traffic. It's going to have trailers, most likely. You know, if this is accepted, what kind of buffer zone on our property lines will we have when this project starts, when it finish? Is there going to be a block wall separating us from there, or just a bunch of trees and bushes or something? That's going to be a security issue for our houses too. Excuse me a minute. What does the storage facility look like? We don't have anything, my wife and I could look like at the rest of our life sitting there looking out our kitchen window, you know? Now, the grade, that seems to be up in the air, the grade. It doesn't, even if it's cut down to Willow Creek Road grade, that still leaves a lot sticking up, okay? But it doesn't sound like it's to be cut down to Willow Creek Road grade. Does it have 24/7 security cameras? Now, new development like this, do you require curb and gutter and sidewalk? Usually, you have a new commercial development come in, do you require that applicant to put in curb and gutter and sidewalk?
Do we have a, Tammy?
Yes, we do.
Do you? Okay. Does it have night lighting? What is the hours of operation? Any landscaping? Well, you talked about a little bit of landscaping. Are there going to be solar panels on the roof? We'll see that too. You know, being, I've been in heavy construction, my past life a little bit, but one part of our property, our bedroom window is 30 foot away from the property line, and I know what the D9 or D7 starts up in the morning sounds like. So could there be restriction of construction, say 30-foot buffer on construction so it's a 10 o'clock in the morning, so we don't hear that thing cranking up or something like that? The other thing I have, oh, so we're answered. So the other thing I have, you got the pictures of the accident that happened there? Didn't meet the news media or anything, but it happened 6:45 Monday, just last Monday. Three engine companies, three ambulances, two of the cars, you could see the center car there, I think that's the one that caused it, but two of the cars that were involved, there's four cars involved, were knocked east of Willow Creek Road over in the bushes over there. So that's what we've been talking about all this time about the traffic hazard in that area there, and it's going to get worse with D-Wells. We know that. I think that's pretty much I got, but thank you for listening to me.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, Chuck Toddman.
Hi, my name is Chuck Toddman. I live at 1113 Dandelion Place, Prescott. My concerns are more traffic. I know that there isn't a lot of traffic coming in and out of a storage building, but there is some, and it's usually people who are pulling trailers or pickup trucks or U-Hauls. And if you look at the design, the entrance is on the west side of the street, so the vehicles have to come in and then turn across traffic. Pinon Oaks is pretty dang busy, and it is not unusual to have three or four cars lined up trying to get out. And you're going to have vehicles coming in and then trying to turn across that. It's going to be interesting. The other issue I have is with a two-story building. Right now, to the south, it's very difficult to pull out because of the traffic coming. The speed limit's 45. Nobody does 45. I'm sorry. And making a left-hand turn there is very dangerous because there's a hill just to the south of the intersection. So you have to sort of pull out and peek, and that's going to make that turn even more dangerous. I know that you're only talking about six, seven cars a day or something like that, but still, when it's you trying to pull out and one or two of those vehicles are in the way, it makes it hazardous. The height of the building is also going to impede visibility. The community only has two exits, Pinon Oaks and Symphony. And Symphony is a good piece away. I live in Dandelion. It's right there. I guess I could do it, but I don't. And I'm concerned about traffic. That accident that occurred just indicates the severity of when something happens because you've got your vehicle coming out going rather slow, and you've got other vehicles, and they're coming at 45 to 55 miles an hour. That's just a recipe for disaster. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, Steve Antle.
That's me. Steve Antle, 5871 Honey Suckle Road. I had a bunch of notes here, but a lot of it's been presented already, so I'll skip around. I'm glad you mentioned the other storage units that are around there within two miles of this location. There's two big ones on Commerce, and I didn't know they were full, but thank you for that information. There probably is a big need for these, and it sounds like there is, but not here. I don't want to see, looking into our subdivision, coming into it, looking like basically an industrial center. Most of these places are in industrial, commercial centers. Go down Commerce, two big ones. One right behind the Buick dealership. You go another about three-quarters of a mile on the south side of Commerce is a huge one. Apparently, they're all full. So yes, there's a demand, but not an entrance to a highly sought-after subdivision that are high-priced houses. People want to live in a rural area, bigger lots, bigger homes. If you want bigger homes and larger lots, you go up in some valley even more expensive. There are no two-story buildings in that area anywhere, other than the commercial buildings that are high in the Kroger Center and so on and so forth. And people say, well, what do you want there? I don't know. What do we need? We don't need anything. Everything is two miles south. The Kroger Center's got everything in it. How many fast food places are in that Kroger Center? Sure in hell don't need another donor shop. We went, we went through that already last month. The thing is, yeah, there's a need for it, but where's that need going to come from? It's going to come from north Pioneer Parkway, Deepwell Ranch, 10,000 houses. Those are the people that are going to use it. Those are the people that are going to need it, the people moving in there. Why not build this thing properly on the north side of the freeway or Pinon Oaks Parkway, whatever you want to call it? And that's where it ought to be, not a two-story building taken away from the aesthetic value of our subdivision. I know the people that live way west don't care, but of us living on the east side do care. I don't mind the highway noise. When I bought the house nine years ago, I didn't care about the highway noise. I was used to it from Phoenix and Scottsdale. But the need for this kind of project is north of Pioneer Parkway. And these people that are going to come down from there got to go across Pioneer Parkway, take a left getting in, take a right getting in and impeding traffic going out with trailers. Then they're going to have to take a left in the speed zone to get back from where they came on the other side of Pioneer Parkway on the north side. So yes, it's going to cause a traffic problem eventually. It's going to eventually cause an accident because people south of us don't need it. They haven't needed it. The people that are going to need it are all north of Pioneer Parkway, and that's where it ought to be built, somewhere in one of those commercial zones or industrial zones. The ones I looked at, other than on Smoke Tree, are in industrial zones. We don't need to have our subdivision looking like you're going into an industrial zone with a two-story building, and there isn't one around there, anywhere's around there. You probably go with a five-mile radius over there, you won't find one, other than the higher buildings in the commercial center at the Kroger Center. But appreciate your time. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
That's all the comment cards we have.
We do have one on Zoom. We have Nancy Trottier.
Trottier, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi. Nancy Trottier. My husband and I own the property at 5949 Honey Suckle Road.
Could we turn the volume up, please?
Okay.
I don't have
Can she turn the volume up?
Can you hear me better now? Can you hear me better now?
No, could you speak louder or closer to the microphone, if possible?
Try it now. Hello? Oh, you're, you're muted, you muted yourself. Nancy?
Hey, can you hear me?
We're better.
Yes, that's better.
All right, I have to hold the space bar down. By the way, I'm in California, attending this meeting. We own the property, north side of Pinion Oaks. But, you know, I didn't know this, this site plan was on the south side until probably just yesterday. But my questions have all been answered, basically, from the site plan, I thank you for that. There still were a few more questions. You know, the main ones are the height of the building, my husband and I feel that, you know, it'll ruin the view from our back properties. Now, we are north, I'm not sure if that will be in, in our direct, it won't be in our direct view in, on the, you know, looking west, but, you know, I'm concerned for our neighbors, too. And I know they're going to develop the property north of Pinion Oaks, so I just, we still felt we wanted to attend the meeting and get some of these questions kind of answered to see how much flexibility, you know, the planning commission is willing to, to accept. So my concerns lately, that haven't been answered, were the, the back property line of the, the development, is there going to be, are they going to share the same property line fence? And is it a block wall, or will there be separate back property line fences? And, you know, the, uh, night lighting around on the buildings, is that going to be very bright? And will there be cameras on, you know, the backside of the building? Kind of being privacy issue at that point for us, you know, people that have houses behind those, this, this site project? And then the property values, you know, having a, a storage unit there, I, I understand they're needed, and, you know, we, again, we bought our property probably six years ago, this is going to be our retirement home, we bought it for being remote, the size of the property, and then it was also, you know, advertised when we bought it as being, you know, property with a view. So those are our concerns.
Thank you, ma'am. Put some light on it.
Excuse me, can I interject one, will you come real quick?
Yes.
If you look at the prop, the...
Come up to the podium.
If you look at the, the pictures of the accident there, look at it again, you can see the two fire ends is diagonal, but you can see where the turnout line is, the pocket starts there to turn in Pinion Oaks Drive. And Willow Lake, Willow Creek Road was closed for three hours, almost three hours, that Monday. It was blocked off of Pioneer Parkway, of course, it never, thank you for letting me interject more.
Okay, no problem. We'd like to recognize that our mayor, Mr. Good, has joined us on that. Would the applicant want to make any comments concerning this? You're not required to, but if you would like to?
Well, I'd like to answer, address some of those, those questions that were asked. As you see in the profile, the lower portion of the drawing there, you can see how much we're looking at cutting that, that grade down from the south to the north. So when you're looking at, at that, you notice that, that nearly half of the building is, is only one story high. I don't know many businesses that are going to accommodate that feature for people that live adjoining to the property. Yes, we will have cameras. The cameras are not designed to view into anybody's backyard, basically, the, the roadway that, that circles the perimeter of the building, so that you can see people coming and going. The other thing, the other feature that we have here is, is we don't, on a project like this, we don't deal with locks. We virtually have, you can operate the keyed system for the gate and your own unit, virtually with your telephone. So there's a lot of things that are cut out that normally don't happen in a normal facility. The, I don't know if, if there's any of you have a question as to address some of the questions that were asked, I'd be happy to answer those.
I have a question.
Butch?
Yeah, Butch Tracy. How close to Willow Creek Road elevation will your finished floor elevation be? Do you, do you have that, have an idea of that?
If you look at that, Willow Creek is, if, if you look to the left of that drawing in the lower portion there, that would be the road that comes out of the subdivision. So that would be pretty much Willow Creek. There is a little bit of rise to Willow Creek going to the south, but not as much as, as what the grade that we're taking down there with our cut and fill operation there. The entrances to the facility are basically designed to enter on the north side and the south side of the facility. See the parking areas there? Those are the areas that, that the entrances for the building, the lower section will have a, basically, an entrance on the north side, the upper section will have an entrance on the south side.
Have you any idea the elevation of the houses?
The houses actually sit pretty high as compared to this property. And they go, and they rise as they go to the south.
Yeah, I know they're higher, I just was, was curious if you had an idea of the footage of what, what that may be?
No.
I'm not real familiar with it myself, that's why I ask.
If I were to guess, I would say that there's, there's probably, from the north to the south, we're probably rising at least 12 to 15 feet across there. And then the church that's to the south, that sits even higher.
Thank you.
So just for clarification, this is Ted Gamboji. The base of the homes are approximately how much higher than the grade at Willow Creek?
I don't, I couldn't answer that.
Now, how, how much, what's your maximum cut for the building?
Well, what you try to do is you balance, try to balance the site. So, again, if you look at that, say if your building is 20 feet right there...
Right.
You're looking at a 10-foot cut on the south side.
So that's roughly 10-foot tall, then?
Yes. Yes, that's correct.
Thank you.
Other questions for the applicant?
Line the first floor?
Pardon me?
Is that bottom line the first floor, then?
That bottom line is the first floor.
Yeah, okay, that's what I, okay.
So the two, the two houses closer to the south end of the, of the property would actually, wouldn't have hardly any...
If you're taking, if you're taking a close cut down close to the freeway, you're absolutely right.
Yeah.
That, that'd be a big cut taken down there. But, you know, even with that, my main concern is, we don't have any two-story buildings in that area. You probably won't find one within a 10-square mile, 10-square miles. There's just none there. The biggest thing is, you're servicing everybody north...
I think that's enough.
...on your Parkway. You don't need to service anybody south.
Well, you'd be surprised, you would be surprised how far the people come to get into a facility like this.
I, I used one in Scottsdale, and I liked it, it was in a, well, it was well-done, it had a, I think a six- or seven-foot block wall all the way around the place, but where was that, was in a highly populated area in north Scottsdale, but...
We need to get back to our procedure here, we have some...
How's it going to affect the property values, and is the direction we cut down low enough to do what he just said?
This is just a comment, sir.
Dan, did you have a question?
I do, there were two points, just wanted to address as well. One was the perimeter, what that would look like, I know we talked about landscaping, what would that security look like around the facility, as well as the solar panels, too, I know that was one of the comments, if you could address those, too.
We haven't discussed anything about solar as far as this facility, and even if we did, we would have condensing units on the roof of this property that would be protecting, be out of sight and out of mind. So if solar were added to that, you wouldn't see them anyway.
And the perimeter, and what that security would look like, chain link, block wall, what are we looking at there?
Most of it, we're not looking at chain link, anything, anything on the perimeter would be a rotten fencing or block wall. And we use our, we use our perimeter fencing a lot of times for, you know, retaining walls and things like that, so that we can back either building up to it or have parking in that area.
Sure.
As you can see in the design, we have, we have setbacks from this property line on all sides that we have to conform to, so that we've got those setbacks, which is basically landscaped areas, we have, you know, roadways that are minimum of 24 feet as far as the city code, but a lot of times, we make them a little bigger. We like, like 26 feet is a nice road width. So you can look, that you've got 36 feet, at least 36 feet from the, the west boundary line to the building itself, and it could be even more. You can see there's, I don't know if that lower line is a landscaped area or what, but basically, we've got a good 26 feet from the property line.
Great, thank you, appreciate it.
Other questions?
And for some clarification on this property line adjacent to the residential, they actually have to screen it, so it'd have to be a solid fencing and landscaping to help buffer it.
Great, thanks, Tim.
You're welcome.
I have a quick question. What type of exterior lighting will you have, if any?
We like to operate dawn to dusk, dusk to dawn, let's put it, put it correctly, dusk to dawn, and our, our lighting would be minimal in terms of, of night lighting, and everything is down, of course.
Okay. Sir, you wanted to come up and make a, no, please come up to the microphone, sir?
You have to come to the podium.
Excuse me, can you step here? I was just going to ask a question, how far back is that going? There's like 3.3 acres there, so is that going all the way back to the church property line?
Well, the parking area is close to the...
To the church property line?
Yeah.
Okay. What about, what about the space, one more, just sorry, one more, a lot of people are going to come in with these small U-Haul trailers, we got parking space, are they deep enough for a car and a trailer, so someone can continue around if they come in with a trailer?
Yes.
Okay.
We have to accommodate, of course, vans and, and trailers, vehicles.
And fire trucks, fire trucks.
Fire trucks, yes, that's another requirement.
Okay. Any other questions, the applicant?
Yeah.
Thank you, sir, appreciate you coming back up.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there a motion?
May I have a question?
I, I want to talk before we make a motion.
Okay.
Tom Riley, I have questions for Tammy, for staff. Could you give us, you gave us a little bit of a background there, the screening requirements based on code, could you kind of elaborate on that just a little bit, on the screening requirements?
Sure. So mostly in the commercial corridor, we do have strict criteria on the commercial corridor overlay, so they have to screen the materials on the roof from anybody seeing it, and then colors are restricted in the commercial corridor, but we also do have the screening requirements. So anytime a commercial development goes up against a residential, they are required to have solid screening and landscaping to buffer the commercial use from those residential uses. So they have a 20-foot setback here, just to the driveway around here, so they have 20 feet here, they, plenty of room here to landscape and buffer and create a solid screening fence along there.
Okay, and the other question that I have is regarding lighting, that's been an issue that's been mentioned, and as I understand it, maybe you can give us a little bit of an overview as to what the codes are with requiring lighting and the kind of lighting, you know, and the restrictions therein?
We don't require the lighting, but any outdoor lighting does have to be dark sky compliant, and they cannot be, we do require a luminaire sheet that tells us, make sure that they're set zero along the property line, so there's going to be no spillage onto those residences, and they're all fully shielded, too, so you don't see the lights. That's all required by our code for dark sky compliance.
All right, thank you for that.
You're welcome.
Okay. Ted?
Ted Gamboji, before we do vote, I wanted to make a few comments. And both comments are procedural in nature, one of which is, we've been at this for a quarter of a year, and I wanted to thank the citizens, you've been diligent, and you've been tenacious, and I, and I applaud you for your effort. The two procedural issues we are dealing with, one is that the citizens of this fair city, back in 2003 and 2015, ended, in voting in favor of the general plan, voted that this would be commercial property. The second procedural issue is, we've got into a lot of boiling the ocean and hypotheticals of what would the building look like. That's not what we're looking at today. Today, we're looking at rezoning. Later on, there is a site plan that has to be presented, and that's when we address issues like lighting and building height and, and buffering from the city. So I ask you to bear with, today, we're here to vote whether we rezone this business general. Later, if we approve it, then we come back and we look at the site plan, and then you can come back and, and discuss issues such as lighting or, or buffering. So thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion, Tom Riley. I make a motion that we forward a recommendation of, a positive recommendation to the city council on the rezoning of REZ 21-008.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Tom Hutchinson, I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion seconded, any further discussion? Kaylee, would you call?
Yes. Commissioner Tracy?
I would approve.
I don't know why I switched from your first name to Commissioner, but, Tom Riley?
Approve.
Tom Hutchinson?
I approve.
Stan Galagoski?
Approve.
Ted Gamboji?
Approve.
Don Michaelman?
Approve.
The motion passes 6-0.
Now, just as a reminder, this will be going to the city council, and you're welcome to go to the city council and present your thoughts and so forth on this. So it's, we just make a recommendation here, okay? Do we have anything else, Tammy?
Yes.
Yes.
And/or Bren.
Thank you. Good morning, Commissioners, Mr. Chair. Earlier this week, at the council meeting, we had a general announcement about the kickoff of our general plan process, and I wanted to alert you all that over the next couple of months, the council will be selecting membership for the committee. There will be one member selected per council member, there will be two Planning and Zoning Commissioners, one BOA member, I believe, a Preservation Commission member, and two council liaisons will be the core group for the General Plan Committee. We do intend to bring a resolution to the council, the second meeting in July, can't think of the date off the top of my head, but it'll be the fourth Tuesday in July, where the council will establish the committee by resolution, and will also adopt a public participation plan for the process. And staff will be downloading more of the outline of what that process will look like over the next couple of years while we update the general plan that was adopted by the voters in 2015, and we'll go back to a vote in August of 2025, unless we finish much earlier. So with that, if, if Commissioners have an interest in serving on that committee, please make that known to council members.
Otherwise, you get drafted.
Of all and told. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Bren. Before we adjourn, I also want to thank, like Ted said, too... Before we adjourn, I also want to thank, like Ted said, too, that you came here, you presented your thoughts and ideas on this, and we look to the public to present things like this to us, you know? So, did you want to make one last comment, sir?
Man gonna fall. I assume the council will review all this dialogue that's presented on this project, all of it, what we've said, all the dialogue, correct, before they...
Correct. Okay. They'll get copies of the minutes here.
Okay.
And we have council members present here also, as we introduced ahead of time, so...
Right, thank you.
All right. Meeting is adjourned.